Do we want to wait for legal counsel? Okay. Elise, the fourteenth over twenty-sixth?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of South Kingstown, and the meeting agenda for Tuesday, December tenth, 2019. First and foremost, as we always do, we'll do a roll call. We have Peter DiStefano.
Here.
Steve Demasi.
Here.
Maria Mack.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Pam Rubenoff.
Here.
Elise Torello.
Here.
And the chair is here. We have the consented agenda, and I understand that we have comments to be made to the November fourteenth and November twenty-sixth minutes from Elise.
Yes, on the November fourteenth, it's just a couple of corrections to names of members of the public. It's Hope Leeson, not Hope Gleason, and Kate Massinanti, not Ms. Manetti. So that was it for the fourteenth, and...
You, Kate.
I can hand it over to you. And for the twenty-sixth, on page four, the conditions of approval, number four. I know this says it in condition of approval, number thirteen as well, but I think it bears repeating in condition of approval, number four. The final plan shall be subject to review and approval by the administrative officer and the planning board.
If I can, I'm just going to jump in really quick.
Okay.
So, Elise, the motions from the Planning Board meeting on the twenty-sixth have already been signed into motion letters and moved forward as voted, so the changes to those conditions, if they're not significant enough to consider reopening the project, I think we might have to leave those ones as is.
Oh, okay.
But aside from that, all others taken and to be adjusted.
Oh, okay.
Any other comments? We have a motion from Steve, a second from Maria. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. First agenda item. Is the preliminary plan public hearing major subdivision for Post Road Pines? Is the applicant present? Yes.
Good evening. I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, Matt Haney. The applicant's property is located off of Post Road, designated as lot sixty-seven on Assessors Platte seventy-seven dash three. It's just under eighty-four thousand square feet in size, and it's in an R forty zoning district. The applicant proposing a two-lot subdivision, which will be accessed by Post Road by a gravel driveway located on Church Street, which is a private street. The lot will meet the area requirements and would meet the frontage requirements, except Route One is a limited access highway, so we can't count that as the lot's frontage. If we could, this would have been a two-lot minor subdivision with no street creation. Instead, we filed it as a flexible design residential project and requested waivers from the road design requirements, as well as the requirement that the open space be a separate lot. We're asking that it be by an easement. And we received master plan approval in August. There's no wetlands on the property, so there was no DEM approval that was required. Post Road's estate road and the applicant has received a physical alteration permit in October. We filed this preliminary plan with plans that were very similar to the master plan, which we were here just a few months ago on. At the November TRC meeting, the members suggested that we revise the open space plan because it was close to Lot Two's building area, so that has been redesigned. We're also requesting a waiver from the requirement that the utilities be underground. A two-lot minor subdivision with no street creation normally doesn't require underground utilities, but because we're asking for waivers, it's considered a major subdivision, so we have to ask for a waiver from that requirement. In this case, there are already poles and overhead lines along Church Street. We feel that it would be less excavation and less clearing by just using the existing poles and putting in a couple, I think it's three more poles that would be required. So Bill Dowdell is the project engineer. Bill, you want to go over what's changed on the plan since we were last here?
Sure, if you take a look at the screen.
Do you have the ability to zoom in on that so that members of the public can see it a little bit more clearly? I see people squinting, so. Exactly. Close the bookmark.
Close the bookmark.
To the left. Yep, there you go. Top left.
So, yeah.
Yep. There you go. Perfect.
That's better, thank you.
Since the last meeting, one change.
Before, could you state your name, please?
William Dowdell, Dowdell Engineering.
Thank you.
The proposal is for the two lots that you see on the screen right now. We're not really improving anything heading north and south in Church Street. We're going to leave the driveway pretty much as it is today. And we're building a new driveway heading to the west to lot number one. The one change from the last meeting is the open space in front of the house on the east has now been slightly revised so that all that open space is not in front of the house. It's more off to the east of the shed. The construction would involve two denitification systems, two houses, and individual wells for each house, and probably about three or four hundred feet of driveway to get to lot number one. And that's the extent of it with the overhead poles is what the client would request.
Any questions from any board members?
Some discussion at the last meeting about identifying the borders of that open space so that it's not encroached upon?
There'd be some sort of monumentation on it. We're not sure exactly whatever the requirements are, be it buffer marker type monumentation, whatever the town requirements are.
My only other concern is I did look at some of these lots in the front that looks like they all use Post Road for a mailing address. But as far as Church Street, that's a conflict with the street in Peastdale. As far as nine-one-one, is that going to be an issue if they use Church Street as an address?
I would say that we should probably accept a Post Road address, I would think. It would only make sense to be, you know, certain number A or certain number B, because everything else is Post Road out there.
If I could just add one thing, though. Generally, some of those things are worked out at, that'll be worked out of my office. We'll reassign and assign accordingly, you know, with reference to nine-one-one. You know, the coordinator is actually Mike Walker, who works in my office. He'll work with the union fire and all of that. He generally does that.
I have a question. It looks like, as you mentioned, the open space is different. So are you saying what we have, our paper copies are more recent than that because the open space has been moved?
Yes, it's dated November nineteenth is the last revision on the plan.
Yeah, I'll confirm that for you, Elise. The electronic plans we have, we don't have the most recent revised electronic ones, so those are up to give everyone who's here just an overview of what we're looking at. You all have that, the paper plans of the more recent one with that slight modification bill is described to the open space on that eastern lot. And so the paper copies you are looking at are the plans to being considered for approved. We just don't have the most recent electronic version, but we have something for people to have a visual.
Right, because these are dated September thirteenth, what we have in front of us.
Yeah, but there's a revised date of November nineteenth on sheet two.
Oh, I see. Yep, open space above revision. Okay.
The other question I had is, would it be at all possible to shift some of the open space to the rear of these parcels? Because scenic highway, like in the westernmost lot, the driveway kind of wraps around in the shed, is kind of pushed right up against that buffer, that open space buffer. Does it need to be there? Can it be a little closer to the front?
It's a balancing act with the zoning setbacks. And keep in mind that the actual traveled surface on Route One is a good hundred feet from the line that we're showing on the plan. So there's a good deal, there's a very, very strong stand of pines to the north.
Is there a reason why the garage is kind of positioned, like the driveway comes in on that western lot and wraps around the house, and then the garage is kind of catta corner behind the northwest corner of the house? Is there a reason why it has to be that close to the lot line? Or can it?
Well, it's an accessory structure, and the client wanted a freestanding, something that it could work in. And the accessory structure can get within ten feet of the property line.
I guess I just don't see the benefit to having it there, where if that were moved a little bit forward, then you could have more buffer behind the house. I mean, I would think that would benefit the property owner, the house owner, as well, because, you know, I also live right next to Route One, and, you know, the more buffer you can get there, the better. I speak from experience.
Yeah. Zoning-wise, when we laid these lots out, we got squeezed with two forty-foot setbacks, one on the front and one on the rear. So we have a very narrow window for the actual house. We're just barely able to make thirty feet. And you see, there might be thirty by sixty footprints. These are just, you know, suggested footprints. We don't have a definite house yet.
Right. I'm not talking about moving the house. I'm just talking about that garage.
The freestanding garage?
Freestanding garage. Like, why is it there and not a little bit farther to the south?
The client wanted it that way. It's that, that's, they just asked us to lay it out that way.
So Kayla, being that it does fit, excuse me, the zoning does allow for a ten-foot setback, as the engineer just stated, and I'm looking at the lot to the east, which has a similar type open space pattern. Because of the OWTS, it's kind of similar in nature, so it looks like there's probably ten, twelve, whatever feet there is there. And so it's equivalent to the one on the west. There's a, so I guess I'm seeing consistency from, you know, the engineer's perspective. I understand what Elise is indicating, but is there any, I mean, they fit within the setback, so I'm just looking at an out.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I guess I'd tell you, if it fits within the setbacks, a garage isn't permitted as part of this process, and they could come back for the garage separately. And I don't think the board really could place a condition saying you couldn't have your accessory structure be up to your accessory structure setback. And so I would sort of, I guess, my advice would be, the garage is not what we're permitting today, nor is there really great grounds for us to say, your accessory structure can't meet your accessory setback until we sort of get to a codified place with property requirements along Route One to make something sort of that strict and direct, I think.
Steve had mentioned monumentation, which I think is a good idea. However, that may not be as effective unless you, in addition to that, deem that open space area no cut buffer, particularly that adjacent to Route One. That would make it that much more effective.
Actually, I'm going to jump in right there and tell you guys on that, on those regards. In the draft motion, which I just point you to, is sort of considerations we've put forward for you all. I would say, look at conditions five and six relative to no cut buffer and open space monumentation, and see if your concerns are sort of properly summarized in there, or if there's anything you would, you know, want to think about changing at some point along the way on that. So that would be on page eight of the staff comments.
Any additional comment from board members? Thoughts, questions? What is the board's pleasure? Public hearing? I'm jumping the gun here. This is a public meeting, so anybody have comment, please come up to the center podium, state your name and your address.
John Cosmini, three-six-four-one, Post Road. You're talking about the electrical being above ground, and you had said how there's already a couple posts on Church Street. There's one, and it's right against my property, where fifty, the one right to the right there, next to Church Street, that goes up there. How exactly are you going to do that? Because right now, the way Church Street goes up and then bangs to the left, Matt has already done some work in there, which, by the way, he was supposed to discuss it with the abutters. Didn't. And where they've gravelled it and whatnot, some of that is actually on, I've had my, our land surveyed, it's actually on that. It's no big deal. I really don't care. It's a little bit. But things are being done without us being involved, and in terms of how you intend to do the wire, get the, you know, goes pretty far out there. The post is right against Church Street. How are you going to get the above-ground electrical out there? I know, but where?
Oh, I imagine there'll be one coming up to the intersection.
Okay, again, and as of right now, the way that street is, part of our land is out into there. So.
I'm showing you that this is the...
This is a map. This isn't reality. This is a picture.
Yep. So this shows a pole here and a pole here.
Right.
Is this your house?
Yes.
So that pole service is your house?
Right.
So then they're proposing a pole.
Okay. All right. But like I said, so the way he has this, the way this road is right there, that's actually further over in reality and on our property.
All right. It can't be on your property, so we'll have to move it.
Okay. All right. That's what I wanted to know.
Mr. Kenyon, can you bring that here so we can see? I'm just, lack of a visual. Thank you.
So is that, is that map part of the submittals?
No, that, I didn't.
Okay. So...
That's his work, Matt Haney's work with National Grid.
Which, which pole again, or is on Mr. Cosmini's property?
So can, as part of the record, as part of the drawings, can we recommend that we have the electrical as part of the submittals? Putting, I mean, so that this is included in there so that we are sure?
We'd be happy to share it with you, but I don't think it's finalized yet.
Okay.
With National Grid, it hasn't been totally, he's been working with them.
So is it appropriate to put that as a condition on this, or is that just, that's going to happen regardless?
I mean, you can absolutely make it a condition that the location of the utility poles be shown when they submit for final plan.
Final plan.
Okay. Great. Did anybody else want to see this?
The location shown on a final plan is going to be approximate. It's really National Grid that makes that decision, but generally speaking, it wouldn't be on private property without easements and all kinds. Everybody would be notified. But, but they can be shown. It's just that they'd be approximate, a bit approximate.
This is, again, a public hearing. Any additional comment? Please come up to the podium. We have a motion from Steve to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Pam. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Was the consensus we're going to add another condition of approval for the poles? Or we just, it's a given that they have to go?
Subject to final approval as well. Kayla? So we're going to do, we're making the change on the findings of fact, conditions of approval, I should say.
You were all planning to do it as an additional condition, number nine? Is that what we're thinking?
Yep.
So we have a draft motion. Would anybody like to entertain reading it?
I'll read it. I don't know how entertaining it'll be. The South Kingstown Planning Board hereby grants preliminary plan approval to the Post Road Pines major subdivision, a two-lot subdivision of an existing parcel located off Post Road, Assessors Platte seventy-seven dash three, lot sixty-seven, as depicted on the plan set entitled. Post Road Pines preliminary plan, Assessors Platte seventy-seven dash three, lot sixty-seven, situated in South Kingstown, Rhode Island, sheets one through three, dated September eleventh, 2019, with revisions through November nineteenth, 2019, prepared by Dowdell Engineering, Inc., three-nine-four-nine, Old Post Road, Charlestown, Rhode Island, zero-two-eight-one-three. This approval is based upon the following findings of fact and conditions of approval. Findings of fact, one through ten. Findings of fact associated with requested waivers, one through four, and conditions of approval, one through nine.
Second.
We have a second from Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Kenyon. Next agenda item is the preliminary plan public hearing, major land development project, Hillside Commons.
Once again, John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, Scott Hallberg. The applicant's property is located at seventy-six Kelly Way. The property is just under three acres in size, and it's in the Route One Special Management District. In March of 2018, the applicant received master plan approval for an eighteen-unit, two-bedroom, flexible design residential project. The project meets the density and setback requirements under the zoning ordinance, and the proposed residential use is permitted. However, the plan required relief from the zoning board to not have to comply with the rear yard parking and service lane requirements in the Route One Special Management District. So after we were before the board in 2018, we went to the zoning board, we received the necessary zoning relief. We also received the DEM approvals that were required, and submitted a sewer feasibility study, which I believe has been reviewed by the Public Works Department. We're here tonight for the preliminary plan public hearing, which was reviewed at your November TRC meeting. At this point, I'll have Eric go over the proposed plan and what's changed since we were last before you.
Sorry. That's all right. Good evening. For the record, Eric Privey, P-R-I-V-E, Registered Professional Engineer with Dupree Engineering Offices at Two Stafford Court in Cranston, Rhode Island. I'm going to quickly go back real quick and just kind of get acclimated with where we are, just to make sure everybody is, because we haven't been back before for a little bit. So real quickly here. The property is located at seventy-six Kelly Way. It's known as Assessors Platte fifty-seven-two, lot fifty-nine. It's a two-point-nine-seven acre parcel, so just below three acre parcel. It is owned Route One Special Management District. It's just located just west of Route One here. So this is the Wakefield, the Wakefield exit right here coming off of Route One. So it's on the east, it's just west of Route One. It's just east of Albro Lane. Albro Lane comes off of, is a small road off of Kelly Way here as well, just north of Old Tower Hill Road as well, and just south of Wakefield Meadows, right located here as well. So the property itself, today, there was a former house that was located on the property. You can see there's a small driveway remains that are still left from Kelly Way here, but there was formerly a house located on the property. There was a kind of a cleared area associated with a yard with that house previously. Stone walls shown as well. It's a wooded lot. The topography slopes generally from a south, from the southeast portion of the property to the northwest. So it goes from this, the way that we're looking at at the lower right to the upper left, pitches and topography. It's a pretty moderate slope, pretty, pretty moderate terrain altogether. The area is serviced by public water and sewer. There are no wetlands located on the property. property. As I mentioned, Albro Lane is run right here, kind of in a north-south direction, there are some residential properties, single-family residential properties located directly off Albro Lane here, and this is a vacant property to the north, vacant property to the east, and then a little bit further down Kelly Way, Kelly Way turns into Hampton Way, which goes into Wakefield Meadows. Proposed 18-unit condominium development, there's two triplexes located on, on here, and then 12 detached, there is a, approximately 800 feet of private driveway, so this is all private driveway, this would not be any maintenance by the town or any long-term to the town. It's a 22-foot wide driveway, it's shown with a nice P-loop in here to be able to just loop right back. The entire surface for both the driveway itself, the sidewalk, and all of the individual driveways are through permeable pavers. There was some discussion, and we heard during the master plan hearing about possibly getting some more permeable, permeable surfaces on this site, either through pavers or such like that, so we actually were able to do it straight through the entire driveway, the sidewalks, and the driveways themselves. There is a five-foot sidewalk that's located along one side as well, so it's shown on the outside there, it's got a small crossing there. All the units are two-bedroom units as required in the Route 1 Special Management District. Parking allows for two per unit, so there's a garage space, and then there's also a driveway space next to it, and there's also seven parallel visitor spots that are located right here in a north-south fashion, parallel along the road here. The, because it's within the Route 1 Special Management District, it also has the 100-foot setback as well, so that's graphically shown right on here as well, all units are greater than 100 feet away. A little bit unique on this piece is that Kelly Way is considered part of that as well, even though Kelly Way is also parallel and off of Route 1, so the 100 feet is actually from Kelly Way even. So if you go from the nearest unit to actual Route 1, which is the, that off, off-ramp going to Wakefield, it's greater than 200 feet from there, so I know that's an important thing for the Route 1 Special Management District to have that visual buffer in that area as well. We had provided a letter from the landscape architect in the master plan as well, that the buffer as it is today, the vegetation that's there today, is, provides a very sufficient buffer as of now, so it didn't make sense to supplement with anything else, so we're actually able to keep that entire 100 foot, other than small little areas for the backyards of a couple of the units here. One thing that I did not mention was there's two substantial copper beech trees that are located on the site, and those are graphically shown right here, and there's another one right here. That was a lot of the discussion at the master plan stage, this actually originally had 19 units, and we were working the 19 units around in different ways, in the end, the, to enable to, in order to work around the trees, the copper beech, we ended up having to lose a unit, so that's why we're 18 now, to work around the copper beech trees on the site now, provide better locations and sighting around it. State permits, as mentioned, there is no wetlands, so the permitting authority is the Riptis Program Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, we did receive our Riptis permit, we also received water quality certification at the same time with that review, as you're likely aware, that's reviewed by DEM engineer and biologist to look at it and make sure that there are no wetlands on the site, the engineer checks all of the stormwater calculations. We also received a physical alteration permit from the Department of Transportation, as Kelly Way is a state road as well, so for the curb cut of this and the traffic and such, was all reviewed and approved by the Department of Transportation. Water approval through Suez Water, so they have reviewed and approved this as well, again, it's a private water line, as soon as it comes to Kelly Way, and sewer was reviewed by Department of Public Services as well, all gra... On-site, there's no need for any pumps on-site as well. Stormwater is handled, as I mentioned, through the permeable pavement, so we're able to just treat it directly on-site, that's using DEM's best management practices, low-impact development, infiltrating right on-site as opposed to going through a closed pipe network, going to an end treatment and having, you know, point sources, it's able to infiltrate all throughout the site as well. Landscape plan was prepared by John Carter and is included in your site plans as well. There was some also discussions, I got a chance to look back at our notes before going through preliminary design, and there was some discussion from a butters at the master plan stage regarding two things, with stormwater, and then also for Albro Lane, there was some concerns for stormwater, and then also for buffering slash screening, so we have provided a six-foot-high solid fence located along the western property here, so all of the properties that back up against the proposed site here, there is a six-foot-high opaque, so it'll be a solid fence along the back there as well, and that just provides some extra buffering from the existing residents on Albro Lane. As far as stormwater, we are infiltrating it all directly on-site, providing water quality recharge to the groundwater, so as required by state, as required by local as well, we have a net decrease from pre-to-post development, so there'll be no increase from what is out there today to post-development with the, with the design. That was kinda my general summary, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just, on the planning staff summary, it was mentioned that there was a requirement of four affordable units, and I believe under the inclusion area should be three.
I think it's three, but it's 15, 15 was the base.
15 units, 20 percent.
20 percent, would be three, so of the, we would have three, so 15 market rate and three inclusion area.
I think it was four when we were at 19.
Right, it would round it that way.
Eric, can...
I was just gonna say, have you identified the three at this point?
We haven't, we will, I didn't know, I wanted to ask the board, in a lot of developments, there can be questions whether it was integrated with this development, I don't see much difference in the units, but I will take any input that the board has on that.
You could always attempt to disperse them a little throughout the site, I mean, it's pretty small. I had a question about your reuse of the existing stone wall. What, what are the plans for that?
Okay, I can zoom in a little bit tighter here. So, the area with the stone wall...
It's on your existing condition sheet, if you have that.
Understood, but I wanted to overlay it with the one that has the units as well.
Right, yeah.
So, we would be able to likely have it go right up until this unit right here, so, because we're protecting for the tree, we have the copper beech that's located here as well, so we would be able to reuse this piece here, and probably portions of it here, but for these two units, I think we'd end up having to take out portions of it in this middle.
And can you reuse that on-site somewhere?
Um...
That's sort of the general practice, if possible.
I'll take a note on that.
Okay, and also, this, the most northerly copper beech has the, the stone wall is like directly underneath it, so I, I would think there'd be, you'd have to take great care if you remove that, because you'd be right in the root zone and adjacent to the trunk, so I would ask the landscape architect for any specifications as to how that might happen, and what sort of, you know, what, what conditions you would be requiring when that does occur.
I have a question, and this might be a crazy idea. Would it be nuts to try to, to think about making the, the lollipop part of that driveway one-way?
Would, so, just to make sure I'm clarifying, that this would only be a one-way around it?
Right, but I was thinking where you come in and go around, maybe even counterclockwise.
That was mentioned at the TRC, I believe, I forget who mentioned that, their thinking was it would reduce the, some of the pavement.
Is that a crazy idea, or is that something worth considering?
It also entails that if you're, if you go kinda clockwise, you're crossing across the travel lane to get to your house, whereas if you go clockwise, the right turn that you're taking, you're only taking a right turn into your property.
So, so Unit 5, for instance, you'd have to go all the way around, if I lived in Unit 5 right here, I wouldn't be able to go straight to my driveway, I would have to go all the way around here and come around, and personally, I don't know I would be likely to really do that. I think ten, most people would tend to go straight to their driveway.
Nobody's coming.
And some of the width of that on the west side is due to the parking spaces, right?
Right.
It would also be important that the limit of disturbance is delineated such that there'd be no incursion into the open space during construction, and additionally, so that future homeowners are aware of the rationale for protection of those trees, it would be important to include that in homeowners' association documents.
Eric, in the letter from DEM, they mentioned the homeowners' association would be responsible for inspection and cleaning out of the stormwater collection system. Can you just explain that a little, and how often?
Sure.
That is typically done?
Yep, so, one of the reasons that this was a preferred location for it is because there is a condominium association. A lot of times, if you see in single-family developments, there may be a homeowners' association, and maintenance is a little bit, not as prompt, I'll say politely, with, you know, treatment of detention basins and such. Being that it's a condo development, and it's a completely private road, there's, it's a necessity, there'll be for curbside pickup, so trash would end up needing to be for the private as well, all of the maintenance needs to be done privately because of that. So, the actual answer, because it's pervious pavement, it's permeable pavement, a couple things would be for the salting practices as well, there's, the way that you sand slash salt for this is a different treatment altogether, and also the vacuuming treatment, so it needs to be vacuumed, it's not like a traditional sweeping, you know, street sweeping, it's a vacuum to be, make sure that it's taking it out, so it's typically done, it's all right in the operations and maintenance plan that would be given and turned over to the condo association, but usually it's done twice per year, that it's, that it's vacuumed, and that would be part of it as well.
Further comments?
Can you share with us anything about the architectural design, just as a reminder?
We had shown it at the, at the, at the master plan, we had a picture at the master plan, I actually have physical copies that I...
Is this...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, that's what we're looking at, yeah, and keeping it a nice, simple footprint, keeping, you can see with the way that the, the garage, where the front porches are kinda set back with the garage, so that's what we're thinking, we don't have it, you know, until we kinda get all, all of it pinned down, but we wanted to at least give a, a visual representation of what we're thinking out here as well.
And are all of them gonna look the same, or are there differences to them, or what the...
They'll likely be similar in nature, so it has a neighborhood feel, but at the same time mixing up either some, some of the finished features, some of the materials, some of the colors, so we, we still want it to be a cohesive neighborhood.
Right.
We wouldn't want, you know, one to just look a completely different unit, it's a very, it's a, it's a, given the layout that they're all right near each other, it makes sense to kinda have similar architectural features, so there will be some differences, but at the same point, similarity, I know that's kind of a vague answer.
Yeah, no, I was just, because I remember talking about that the last time, I just wanted to make sure that things were similar.
One of the things we're still keeping open as well is looking at the roof lines on that, because it was a mention of offering a solar as an option as well, rooftop solar, I remember mentioning, that that was mentioned as well, so that's something we're still continuing to keep in mind as well.
Thank you for considering the rooftop solar, I really appreciate that, I also appreciate the amount of pervious pavement that you're putting in, that's, that's outstanding. I just had one last comment about the landscaping on Sheet 2 of 3, the one that shows the fence, there's boxwood on there, and I'm pretty sure boxwood's invasive, so could that, it is?
It is not, but...
It isn't?
There is a really terrible disease going around right now called boxwood blight, so there are other natives that you could...
Right, something like ink.
This was, yeah, it was a typical unit planting, we wanted to show you what the idea was around the units, typically when you see a landscape plan, it's more along street trees and things like that, but we wanted to at least show what a unit planting idea is, so you kinda get that vision of, of the property in general. So, I'll note it though, thank you.
So this is a public hearing, if there are any comments, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Bill Croupy, I live at 260 Hampton Way, which is a unit within Wakefield Meadows, so a couple of questions, on page 10 of 20, where you discussed the buffer on Kelly Way, and as you indicated, Kelly Way comes down into Wakefield Meadows and becomes Hampton Way. That being said, what is the buffer from Hampton Way?
So, I'm gonna, so Kelly just turns into Hampton, right?
Right, so Hampton comes, Hampton goes from one end to the other.
Understood, yeah, and at the, at the crest of the hill, it pretty much turns into Hampton.
Correct.
As it goes down the hill, and I know, there's the new, with the, the gate that's going in now.
Right, okay, and then on the...
I don't know that off the top of my head, because of where that, that point is, but...
Okay, just to delineate, so you're coming down Hampton Way, but then there's residences on the other side, you know, different Hampton addresses, and then there's, there's the woods.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess the question is, overall, what will be the buffer from Wakefield Meadows?
So, if it was, and just looking up here, are you talking about like the shortest possible point, like from this corner here to, to where Hampton Way is right there, would that be...
Right, yeah, the shortest, sorry.
I can give you that, hold on a minute, I just wanna scale it real quickly here. I'm showing it as about, hold on a second here, 200 feet, 200 feet from this nearest corner here, with the vacant wooded lot today, so that's vacant today, but from this very nearest corner here, if you went a straight line right to this piece of Hampton Way right here, I've got about us 200 feet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The other thing, you indicated that this is gonna be a condo development, so will this be an over 55 development, or...
It's not, it was, it's an over 55 development at this time.
Okay, and then the multi-dwelling, those will be individual owners?
I believe that's the, the plan, yes.
Are any of these subject to rentals, or strictly owner-occupied?
I'm the civil engineer on that one, so I don't actually know that answer, so...
I don't believe there's any limitation on renting.
So, somebody's, an individual like myself could purchase one, and then in turn rent it out for rental income?
I think so.
Is it possible to get a copy of the schematic of the...
If you wanna, after, I can, I'll take your information, I can just email it to you or something.
Sure, perfect, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I just ask a question while this is up, this one is up?
Sure.
Can you just review how people are gonna enter the development, they'll be entering from Wakefield, is that correct?
They'll be entering, you have the Chamber of Commerce right here, so you'd be coming in off of here, you're taking the right before the, the car dealership, this is Kelly Way here, Kelly Way comes up, and then it turns about right here, it turns into Hampton Way, so they'd be coming in, so they'd be, the access is here, and then it would be coming here, so all of the, the access from the development itself, all the way to Old Tower Hill Road, was reviewed for traffic, reviewed for Department of Transportation as well, so that was all part of the physical alteration permit, not literally just the curb cut, but the traffic flow to the surrounding, because Old Tower Hill Road is also state road as well.
Thank you.
I believe at the master plan meeting, there was some concern raised by residents in, off of Hampton, about people going through their neighborhood... in, off of Hampton, about people going through their neighborhood. I believe since then, they've started, I don't know if they completed putting in a gate so that people can't go through.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
John, on the affordable housing, is it closing 80% for 99 years or is it...
It's inclusionary. I believe inclusionary is required to be 80%. Kayla, yes?
Yes, 80%, 99 years.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tossa.
My name's Bill Moutini. I live in Wakefield Meadows at 49 Camden Court. And you led up to my question about the traffic. All the traffic from this development has to come out by the chamber. We are putting up a gate to prevent the traffic from going through Wakefield Meadows, but we also just gave an easement to the Wesley Credit Union. So the traffic has already built up, and with this development, the only way in or out for these folks is over by the chamber. And it gets a little difficult pulling out of there, because you have traffic coming up the hill towards, you know, James Liquor. You have traffic coming out of the old Casey's, the chop house now. You have traffic coming out of the liquor store, and then you have people coming down the hill that just got off the highway. So I'm not sure if it's, you know, up to you folks to consider the traffic flow or, you know, to have the Department of Transportation or whatever figure that out. I know it's been a concern, and I don't even know what you can do about it, because you have a red light already at the shores of Plaza there. So it was just a concern. I don't know if you have an answer.
Mr. Preve? Yeah, I have. Actually, I believe, we had, not we, not to Preve in particular, but we had a traffic engineer, beta group, pull together a traffic study, and as part of that, giving to Department of Transportation with the review. These are two-bedroom condominium units. They're not typically high-intensity traffic uses. Typically around the, like, the peak hour, which would be like a 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, or a 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, for 18 units, it's probably, for a peak hour, only generating maybe 20 cars altogether. So that's one per three minutes, you know. It's on average, like, if you can average it out. So it's not, it's not creating, it's not creating a large queue to this area. It's typically metered out throughout that hour anyway, so.
Yeah, I understand that, and, you know, that's just a little additional traffic. I think with the renovations at the dealership, I think their business will grow. And then we have the credit union who now has that easement, which I think will add to the traffic flow. Again, I don't know if you have an answer, but I just wanted to, you know, go on record to say that, you know, I think it's a concern, you know, for the long term, not just for this development, but just in general.
Do school buses go down Kelly Way now?
Not that I'm aware. There would be, yeah. I don't believe that they do today.
So how will school buses in the future turn? So if they came in off of, so if there's children in this development, how would the buses go?
Well, it's a private road. They wouldn't go in. The development. So they'd only go up to Kelly.
But then they'd have to turn around something, because this is gate off on the outside.
Thank you.
I know the way that it was designed with the gate, the gate was to be far enough back to create a natural hammerhead in that area as well, like where the gate is and where the access road to Wesley Credit Union is, was to create a natural hammerhead in that area, so you could physically turn around and do that. Right. It's, the new gate is approximately, I'm just, about here. So you had, there's an entrance, there's an access road that comes off of, obviously, this is an old area, this is the original doctor's office, but, oh, it's the pediatrics, excuse me. But there's a access road that comes along here now, and then there's the gate here. So that was, the gate was put back far enough to be able to create a natural hammerhead in that area to turn around.
Can we get you to show that in the next video, so we can just see the other provisions for your school buses?
Yes.
And Rich, can we, or Kayla, can we just, you know, it's a good question that Joe's posing relative to school bus turnaround. So just check with the school department, or, you know, if they were to, you know, house kids in the 18 units, how would they serve them?
It's an easy enough question for us to bring to them before the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moutini. Next gentleman?
My name is Thomas Evans. I'm at 65 Albro Lane. I didn't get everything you said. I couldn't hear you too good. But the last time I was here, I was more concerned about runoff on my property, and I'm looking at this, my wife sent me here, so I got to go back home with some information. She wanted to know what kind of wall that was. Is it a wooden fence?
I don't know that the materials in particular, whether it's wood or vinyl, but it will be solid. It will be not be, it's six feet tall, and it will not be able to be seen through. So the material is yet, but...
Okay, I know you said something about sewage, because we was worried about runoff.
Right.
You know, running onto, because I do have a cesspool and a well, and worried about oil. So when you say parking, you know, I'm thinking about all the cars that's parking and over time.
So all of the driveways, especially, so, Mr. Evans, you're located right here, correct? I'm pointing up here. You're located right off of Albro Lane?
Yeah.
That says Thomas Evans. So all of these driveways, driveways in units are actually pointed towards the street. So the driveways, even though they go to the units, the driveways themselves are pitched back to the street, because there's the stone reservoir that helps for the infiltration.
Okay.
It's underneath the road. So both the driveways and the units themselves are all pitched back to infiltrate. So it'll be recharged directly into the groundwater in that roadway area. So there's not coming back towards your parcel.
Yeah, and the other question the gentleman passed on is he wanted to know, is they rental or is they going to be purchased?
I think so far, it's purchased with the possibility. I, I'm...
Okay. Okay, I did my homework. That's good.
Mr. Evans, before you, is it, do you have an existing problem now with runoff?
What was that saying?
You have an existing problem now with runoff on the property?
Well, no, it's about, when it really rained, it's like a flood coming down that hill where I'm at, you know. One time it rained so hard it actually washed the road out that we, that we come in and out of there on. And I'm just saying, if it's oil, you know, some cars leaking oil and over time. I'm looking at pollution, that's all I wanted to know. So it's something being done about that. As long as it's good runoff, that's all we're concerned about.
With the original plan, before we went with the pervious pavement, I believe there was the potential for drainage facilities.
There was.
He said the rear of the lot near his property.
There was.
Which with the pervious pavement, we were able to eliminate this.
The, when you do that, do you, before you put the final road in, do you have to go in and aerate that soil to keep it from being compacted before you put in the stone or?
Correct. Yeah, it needs to be, yep. And then, all the details are on the detail sheet, but there's, between the stone bed and then there's something called a choker course as well. But, I mean, the stone bed's over two feet, you get over two feet of storage capacity within the stone as well. But yes, clearly, you cannot be constructing with heavy construction vehicles and compacting that to a place where it's not going to be able to infiltrate.
So, Mr. Preve, I just want to go back to the traffic flow proposed that Elise was mentioning. So I think we're like-minded, and I think, so if you were to consider going, as you enter the roadway...
We'll go back to the air, just to make it a little easier.
Right. So as you enter the roadway, and you can go back to the site plan, just taking the right, so making it counterclockwise one way. I was just saying it differently, but it's, you know, so that as an opportunity. So acknowledging that those on the left-hand side of the road that are probably within 100 feet are going to probably sneak in there, but just consider it. Again, this is a public hearing. Any additional comment from the public? Members of the board? Pam?
Yeah, just a clarification. Down by the Mazda dealer, do you recall if there is a stop sign there in front of the chamber?
I don't, no, no. Kelly Way is a free left to go to Old Tower Hill Road. So if I was going in this direction, down Kelly Way, I can just continue to go this way right now.
So just a, oh...
Just one second, sir. Come on up, but just one second.
So I was recently in the Mazda dealer, and my niece was driving a car out of there. And we, there was a little bit of an issue of coming out of the Mazda dealer and then somebody coming down Kelly Way. And so I'm wondering if that was clarified in the traffic?
Well, you know, it's actually, before you go, if you just don't mind, but it was something that was brought up at the Old Tower Hill Road work that they're doing that's coming up. So they're actually modifying that little corner there in order to make it a little more understandable to the driver.
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
The actual through road, because it almost looks like you're supposed to drive straight into the Mazda. But early, you're supposed to go around the bend. And I believe that it includes stop bar and signage for Mazda, and it would help enforce the through portion of it, which is around the bend. So there is some thought put into it, but it was at the Old Tower Hill Road redo that's going on now.
And Rich, do you feel that when they were looking at the Old Tower Hill Road redo, that they were considering 20 houses up there plus the houses from Hampton Way?
Well, the traffic study, I don't know that the, there was a traffic study done for this. I'm not sure where they did counts. I frankly can't remember, but there was, there was some traffic study done. But, you know, I kind of echo what, what's being stated here is that generally, 18 units, especially two-bedroom units, don't generate a lot of traffic.
Right.
I really don't think this is going to impact that intersection too much. Now, I've been down there. There are cars. There's a regular flow of cars coming through there.
Yeah.
Presently, and it's, it was even before the travelway to the bank was done. So it's really a lot of the meadows and this, you know, now the bank will add a few more, like Spence stated. But generally, this shouldn't add too, too many. From my, you know, experience, I really don't know that it would add too many.
So hopefully, the signage, the signage will help, because it was just a little confusing of who has the right of way.
Yeah, and I'm not concerned, again, I'm not concerned about the traffic numbers, but I exactly, I think exactly the way you feel. And I think those came up early in some of our discussions with the Tower Hill Road project. I think it was real early on, we were saying, that's got to change, because it really is weird.
So what, what would you imagine is the timing of that? I'm just thinking about the timing of that versus the timing of this project and how, if there's any thing that needs to be done to condition this project to make sure that things are timed correctly? Just to...
The, the, no, I mean, they'll probably be going on at the same time. The, Old Tower Hill Road's been awarded, it, it's actually, they could start now, frankly.
Okay.
But they'll most likely start in the spring. I can't see that anybody's going to start now. The only thing they could do now is advance things, maybe, you know, take down different things, you know, remove some of the things that they can, but as far as cutting roads and everything, they're not going to do that now. They'll wait till the spring, but it will be in the spring. It'll probably go right through the fall. I would imagine this will get going, you know, in and around the same timeframe, but, you know, they did do, there was a condo, small, smaller than this, five or six units, just a little bit further up Route 1 on this. You know, and that wasn't, that has a direct driveway right onto Route 1.
Right.
And it really, we didn't hear of any issues with respect to traffic getting onto Route 1. No, it was much smaller, and there were only, I think it was maybe eight units.
Right. The other hillside?
It didn't, I don't, I don't, Tower Hill Condos, that's what it was. I don't recall hearing anything about traffic getting onto Route 1 or any issues like that.
So, so Rich, you feel that the associated improvements with the Tower Hill Road project will help with the traffic flow, because the volume itself is not a concern?
I think that, and I also think that the modification of Old Tower Hill Road is going to make this little area much better. You know, it's going to be divided, there's going to be a landscape island that goes from the bridge, you know, all the way around the bend, sort of up to, up to Dunkin' Donuts, and there's more landscape. It's just going to make it, I think, a cleaner look, and I think it'll help with traffic flow.
I'm going to piggyback on to that a little bit, because part of what Rich hasn't said anecdotally, but I think helps to know, is Rich, John Shock, the Director of Public Services, Par, who's working on the design of Old Tower Hill Road, and Ride Out staff themselves, and the owner of Flood Mazda, and myself had a site visit out there to look at exactly what was going to be changed. So we actually spent some time right at that exact intersection, looking at what was going to be proposed to change to make sure it worked for the Mazda dealer while still improve the traffic flow on Kelly Way. So when Rich is talking about these changes, they're changes we spent some time with Ride Out on to address the issues that are there today.
So if I could just comment, when you exit Wakefield Meadows onto Kelly Way, the first challenge is that, that road that was recently made into the bank, people don't stop, okay? You come further down Kelly Way, there is now a stop sign there, to answer your question. They did a double yellow line on Kelly Way. There's also a stop sign that faces Flood dealership. Nobody stops. Twice, personally, I had to, you know, stop short, because something, they just blow through that stop sign. No pun intended, but in that curve there, it now floods out. After all the beautiful work they did with the stone and everything, while this heavy rain, it, it doesn't drain, and obviously, with the colder temperatures, that's a dangerous curve. And, you know, if it's, and if it's iced over, in fact, Saturday morning, one of the older occupants of Kelly Way had an accident there. So I know it's well-intended, but I think one of the things, if you could, is, you know, go see the Flood dealership and reiterate, their clients, their customers, whoever goes there, there was a stop sign there. Or put one of these flashing stop signs there. I mean, it's well-intended, but human nature being what it is, and I think part of it is, is that people just aren't used to, you know, the new flow there. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to, were we going to talk about potentially adding sidewalks someplace in there, or is that...
Back to the site plan.
Internal?
No, I'm sorry, I was referring to off-site. Off-site improves, it's one of the items in the, in the table for discussion. The interconnect, if you need, on page, was it 14?
I believe we discussed that at the master plan, and it didn't seem like there was consent, is the board members that wanted sidewalks?
It's a sidewalk to nowhere.
Although we do have precedent, that we did set on Kingston Road, when the residential unit, which is just north of the police station, was developed. We did...
That was kind of connecting to a, there's a bus stop there, and it was connecting to the sidewalk in front of the police station.
Further north goes nowhere, and then south, there's a gap between the police station and that development.
Sidewalk on Old Tower Hill Road?
Stops right at the corner.
Yes.
I think a thing for the board to think about on this one is, I'm going to give you really rough GIS drag numbers, but from, you're talking about between like 650 and 700 feet of sidewalk being constructed to get from where the sidewalks are on Old Tower Hill Road to where the new access way for this development's proposed. So I think what I would, sort of to frame the question for you all a little bit in a bit of context, is with the, with 18 residential...
bit of context is, with the, with 18 residential units there, is the pedestrian traffic generated from this development significant enough to require the construction of 600 feet of sidewalk off-site? That's sort of the framework for when you require an off-site improvement. How the regs ask you to sort of approach that is, the scale of the development tied to the scale of the off-site improvement proposed. And so I'd say, consider that as you're thinking through what you want to think about proposing or sidewalks on it.
So, maybe we should, I'm looking at page 13 of the document that Kayla distributes. And I think we talked about architectural renderings, but my only question is, with the picture that you indicated, so obviously the garage can shift over to the other side?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. So is that the game plan? This will be the, the basic image of all 18 units? Any thoughts, questions on that, from anybody? Item number two on the list was trash disposal. Depict area for trash recycle collection on the site plan. And I wasn't sure if that's going to occur within the dwelling, the garage itself, or is there...
They would all be rollout. And because it's a private road, it'd be private pickup as well. So there's no dumpsters, no centralized locations proposed. I think we've been, I believe we have a note on here that even says it. Yeah, I'm on sheet three, the general notes, number 12. No common refuge, storage, collection, or recycling areas are proposed. Individual units are proposed to utilize curbside rollout bins. So we wanted to put that right on the plan as well, so that was clear that there won't be any centralized dumpsters.
Great. Thank you. Stormwater infrastructure, I believe we've already talked about that. Any other thoughts, comments on stormwater management, staff? Specimen trees, I think we talked about that. Specifically, the two, obviously we've seen one unit go because of that. So we have the two trees. We talked about the stone wall, the, what is, will be torn down for units 16 and 17. Consider using the wall material somewhere on the property. Any other comments regarding the specimen trees and the stone walls?
I think actually John had mentioned some of that stone might be used on the entrance way because they do show some stonework at the entrance way. So they've got to document that they've reused that stone wall material. They have a place to put it.
And then just referencing my earlier comments with regard to construction and future maintenance, Homeowners Association and, the applicant spelled it correctly, but it's, beech is B-E-E-C-H. It's not a surfside tree. Just so you know.
Other item was pedestrian circulation. We just talked about the sidewalk in, along Kellyway, and there doesn't seem to be any appetite or any further thought on that one?
No? Okay. No, I was just, you know, thinking about the idea of if you had a one-way road into the site, then theoretically it, you would save some money by making it narrower than a two-way road, and that might help to fund construction of sidewalks, but, you know. Thinking out loud.
Good point.
I would caution on, on reducing the road width too much because there's limited parking in front of these units. And on that Saturday night when somebody has a dinner party and has a couple extra cars, narrow down the road much more is, I don't think it would be a good idea.
Yeah, and I, I'm always concerned about safety, pedestrians, strollers, et cetera. And I think we've had that, you know, there was the development of what, on Ministerial Road. On the wastewater, that was resolved. Inclusion Arizona units, we did discuss that. It's three units to be identified by the applicant, not four, when this...
I had a question on that. Is this phased? Is it going to be one phase or two?
Probably just one phase. Given, given the, the infrastructure that needs to go with it, I mean, the stormwater system is, is the road itself. So my assumption would be that the units would be built at the same time. I mean, it's, it's a, you look at, by the time you take the 100 feet off the front, the actual project itself is approximately an acre and a half. It's not, about you take, it's the total of the three-acre parcel, so it's two acres. So it would all be centralized. It would be built at one time. It would be difficult to phase that. You would, you would end up with partial pieces of the road and things that wouldn't...
I only ask because we'd have to accommodate for the phasing and the numbers.
Okay, so the other questions that were posed by the audience members or public comment were the question about age restriction, and the applicant indicated there is going to be no age restriction in this development. That's number one. There was talk about owner occupied rental. Again, that's something we cannot control as, as a board. That is purely, you know, up to the developer and how he or she are going to manage the sale of the property. There was the question posed by Joe Murphy relative to the bus turnaround, which is a very valid question, not only going up Kellyway. And I think Mr. Purdy, you talked about the hammerhead that's maybe not visible, but it's there technically to go up to the gate that is shut, and then back into the roadway where the credit union is, is one option. But also need to understand if the developer would be willing to allow the bus to travel up on the private road. That's going to be your call.
We'll talk to, yeah, we'll, we'll talk to the school because they're going to need to tell us how they're going to want to pick up the kids too, right? So, that makes sense.
There was also public comment relative to the, the stop sign that is at, faces people who are leaving Flood Mazda, if I understand that correctly. Again, we don't, we can't control that issue. That's something that human nature has to realize, stop sign, it means stop. But I do, I mean, I'm encouraged by Rich's comment relative to the road, that's the improvement that's going to happen on the road. And I would imagine this is not going to happen immediately. So between the road construction cycle, the development schedule, I think there's going to be a vast improvement of that intersection, hearing from what Rich was indicating. So I'm cautiously optimistic that that'll improve flow. Rich?
Well, vast is too strong a word.
It's sub, it would be subjective, I guess.
Richard, none of the Traffic Commission, TRC Square, has gone. When a resident has a concern like that, that they think they need a stop sign or it's not well-mocked, who should they direct that, that question?
Well, and we've had that, you know, an example on Waits Corner Road, they went to the police department, the police department contacted us. We looked at traffic flows, things like that, and how, how those roads were to work. And then we, we added a stop sign.
As a resident, who should they direct that question?
It's the police department.
To the police department? Okay.
Right. But this is a state road.
Okay.
So it's a state.
It's a whole different matter.
Yeah, it's a state. In fact, I'm surprised that when, when we were there, I don't think the stop signs were out there. I don't remember.
Stop signs there, problems. They don't have a line. They put the yellow lines in the road. They never put a white line because it may where the stop sign is.
Excuse me, sir? Can you do me a favor? We, could you just come up to the podium, state your name, please?
I live in Wakefield Meadows. So as I was saying, you know, Phil and I, we ride our bikes all the time through there. What happens is, is they come out of the Mazda dealership and they stop at the white line, which is the divider of the road. They don't, they, they need a white line to divide where, where the stop sign is. They come out into the middle of Kellyway there and they think that's, that's the stop, stop sign.
Again, again, it's a, it's a state issue. We've talked about it. But I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm going to relay your concerns, but it is a state road. But again, they're, they're trying to modify that so that there, I mean, we, at least this is what we talked about, that there are no stop signs there. The only stop sign is going to be at Mazda. So that Mazda has to stop coming out of that parking lot, they're supposed to, okay? But you're right. I mean, it's a little strange. So if you were coming in off of Old Tower Hill Road and you were going into Mazda, it's a little more like you want to just fly right through there without stopping. And I understand that. And I'll relay some of that information. I'll, I'll relay that to them.
Appreciate that.
The next time we speak, we deal with, we've been dealing with Par on this from time to time. We can talk to them, and we can also talk to the state about it.
Does Mazda have a stop sign at their?
I, I don't think they do right now.
I mean, they just went through a reconstruction, so they must have had a development plan review.
They, they've been, there's a little bit of pushback on some of the changes that have been discussed over here because they like that free flow there.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's going to have to change. Whether it's striping or whether it's curbing, that's the part that we're, nobody's too clear about right now.
Yeah, some like raised textured pavement.
Well, that was discussed as well, so that they could still get their loading done.
Mm-hmm.
But the, the tendency for people wouldn't be to just fly straight through. They would have to turn like this, and then they'd take a right-hand turn like you. So it'd be perpendicular to the curve is what it needs to be. It needs to come in perpendicular. Right now, it comes in like a highway ramp, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not good. So we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk to them more about it.
All right. Thank you, Rich. Any further thoughts, suggestions? Pam first?
Sorry, I, I didn't bring this up before on the landscaping. So I'm just noticing that around the units, there are some shrubs and such that, as you pointed out, some typical shrubs. So there's no trees, and I'm just looking, you know, the middle island, you know, seems to be done nicely. And I'm just wondering, and we keep the two coppers, on the, on the whole outside area, there's no trees. And I'm just wondering if there's room up by units in between nine and 10, 10, 11, 11, 12? Because it just seems very blank and just...
One of the issues, one of the issues that we had when we were working with the landscape architect was also finding, because of the, the placement, hold on, I'm trying to get back there, sorry. I'll get there. One of the issues we ended up having was between the locations of the driveways and the porches. By the time you put a tree there of any significance, I mean, by the time you put, say, say a tree of this size right here, that's going to have what goes with it. You know, by the time you have it, we want it to be successful. We have a sidewalk here, then we have a porch here, and we have the unit. So the root, the, the room for the root, also adjacent to it, just wasn't something we felt was going to be a successful location, was kind of the thought on it. So we do have it at the entrance when you come in. So you can see it's kind of lined as you come on the entrance here. But as the units start, the thought is that we'll let the individual landscaping of the units, because the face of the unit's also going to be there too. So it's going to be, I mean, that's kind of the point of why it's up where it is. So you're going to have the units and the architecture taking care of that versus having the trees in that area.
Right, that's why I was wondering...
It's not like, it's not like the units are way back and it would be just like an open expanse. The units are there. So they're kind of complementing with the trees. And that was, that was our thought on the, on the design of it.
Yeah, it's just hard to visualize seeing, you know, the, the rectangles there without landscaping. So I have been thinking, I didn't know if any, if you go up to the units at the end there, in between nine, you know, some of those in between, you do have a little bit of space for some trees, but in between the units more than in front of the units. But that's just a thought.
And, and there are trees that would be appropriate in maturity, scale and size that, that would fit, that have a vase-like shape. And, you know, we're not necessarily talking about oaks. And when you look at the architectural, of course, it's surrounded by trees. There's like a little mini, looks like a river birch tree on the right, and some other generic trees around it. So it does give the impression that...
Joe, you have a comment?
I'm just going back to a question you asked me. Do you need to see the drawings for the school bus turnaround? And I think it depends. So if they're approving the bus from the existing configuration, whatever that may be, then we don't. Because they're saying they can turn around with how it exists. If they're proposing something that's getting improved, then we actually need it to be made part of the set to make sure it's done.
Okay.
I can't tell you that I actually know. I intend to, after this meeting, reach out to the school superintendent to just discuss, making sure we get the right point of contact for the developers team to figure out the school bus turnaround, and to ask that exact question about whether they would just enter the P-loop site on the private road and use that, or whether there would be an issue with it. Right, right. I mean, I, and I'm not, I have to tell you, I honestly don't know very much about how busing, like what busing standards are in the town. So we'll look into it and get back to you guys.
I just wanted to commend the applicant on their use of previous pavement. Although it requires very specific installation and maintenance, everything has maintenance requirements. And in the long run, it's, it's much better for the environment considering the TMDL in this area, and it's less expensive than long-term gray infrastructure. So, good, really good example.
Lisa, Peter, any comments, thoughts? So, okay, so we have a motion from Steve to close the public hearing. Do we have a second? Second from Pam. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So we have, I think, two outstanding issues. And Kayla, I'm not sure how we want to handle this, but, so to Joe's point, we want to see that the school bus, the Mr. Purdy, the drawings that indicate that it can turn around in the suggested area. And again, I'm going to defer to counsel, talk to your, the applicant, your, your client relative to the bus coming within the complex itself. And secondly, there was suggestions from Pam and Maria about some additional landscaping between, at the end, the northern end of the property, those three units. So if that could be looked at. And then finally, just the driving around, whether it's one-way, two-way, give it some additional thought as discussed. I think there was also a request regarding the stone walls. Yes, sir. Yeah. And again, so whether it's used at the front of the entrance or somewhere on the property. Staff, any thoughts?
Do you want to direct staff to prepare a motion? Based on our discussion tonight?
Okay, we have a motion from, from Steve with the four additional items that we, that were just discussed. We have a second from Pam. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Lisa?
Just one more landscaping, maybe replacing those boxwoods with something like an inkberry.
And, and as I referenced earlier, the...
Go with the trees.
The, the removal of the stone wall and having an appropriate person on site, whether it's the landscape architect or an arborist, relative to, especially that northernmost upper beach, and all the tree protection measures that we discussed, and so on.
Okay, so any further discussion? So we have a motion from Steve, we have a second from Pam with the five added caveats conditions that were just discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. The next agenda item is the request to combine the review stages, major land development project at 2221 Robinson Street.
Once again, John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant. We were here last month on this pre-application, and I think the only issue was combining the master and preliminary plan stages.
Right. We spoke with you folks last month and thought it was a great idea. So I would make that motion.
We have a motion from Maria. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Joe. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. And item number four, pre-application concept plan review and request to combine review stages, major subdivision Curtis Corner Estates.
Gosh, a lot of technology here. How do we like move into the landscape?
While we're waiting, could you both announce yourself?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Josh Rosen for the record, professional engineer with Principia Engineering Incorporated, office at 27, Sir Connor Rich Drive in Tiverton. With me, I'll let the applicant and owner introduce himself.
John Daggasino, owner of J. Thomas Construction.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So we're on tonight's agenda to discuss a proposed three-lot subdivision off of Curtis Corner Road on the property designated as Assessor's Platte 47-2 Lot 32. The site, best locus is right here on the cover sheet, where on the north side of Curtis Corner Road, approximately 350 feet south of the Curtis Corner intersection, I'm sorry, west of the Curtis Corner intersection with Sweet Island Farm Road. The property, as it sits today, is approximately three and a half acres just shy of that. So what we did at the pre-application stage to get some discussion going with the board and the staff is develop, obviously, first and foremost, a yield plan, which in this scenario, the yield plan illustrates a conventional hammerhead-style 40-foot right-of-way on the property, on the west-silly property limits, extending from south to north. And off of that proposed right-of-way in this scenario would be our three lots, two of which have primary frontage on that right-of-way, one of which you consider a corner lot on the right-of-way in Curtis Corner Road. It's an R-30 zoning, so minimum lot size, 30,000 square feet. We had the wetlands survey, I'm sorry, the property surveyed, and the wetland information collected and flagged by biologists on site. There's two locations in the proximity of this parcel. One of them is obviously on the property itself in the southeastern corner. That's a forested wetland, less than three acres in size. There's actually no jurisdictional buffer on that wetland system. The other wetland area lies to the north of it, right off the north-west-silly limits of the property. That's also a forested wetland. That one does have a jurisdictional buffer of a 50-foot perimeter wetland that encroaches onto the property. Right now, what we had done when, previous to the application, has gone out, and because this area, it is in the future sewer area, like many of the properties down Curtis Corner Road, but sewer not available or fronting on the property now, we did some soil evaluations, two of which were actually done previous to us getting involved on the property. We did, performed an additional four holes, and we located those test holes, and you'll see on the next plan sheet, would support the three lots for the yield plan, as well as the flexible frontage design, which we'll get to. So anyway, the holes were witnessed, all six of them, by DEM, the first two that were done on the north-west-silly area of the property. Those, I think, had a 66-inch water table approved, and the four that were performed by Principia Engineering and witnessed by DEM all had 48-inch water tables approved at the time. So, like I said, the yield plan is in front of you here on this sheet, hammerhead with the three lots. We'd like to propose, whoops, sorry, that was the existing conditions. We would like to move forward and propose the same three-lot residential development utilizing your flexible frontage design standards and front all three lots on Curtis Corner Road. And again, the plan sheet here sort of illustrates the configuration of those three lots. We'd be taking advantage of the flexible frontage for the middle lot, let's say, and the eastern lot. I think it's lot two and three. As lot two has 25 feet of frontage, I'm sorry, well, lot two has 25 feet of frontage. Actually, it's lot one, the one on the west, has 90 feet of frontage.
How much?
As you know, to propose a flex frontage, all the other requirements of the zoning ordinance are adhered to in this concept, as well as any protections going forward with the subdivision regulations. We intend to meet all those standards.
Josh, could you say one of the test holes was 66 and all the others were 48?
Yeah, the first, the first set of test holes, so test holes on the northerly, the northerly most test holes, they both were 66-inch water tables, and the other four...
So those were 1 and 2?
Correct.
And then 66?
66, three, four.
And they were all 48?
Correct, three through six.
Typically, when we do a flexible frontage, do we require them to show the ISDS in the yield plan that the ISDS could fit on a test?
Along those lines, we typically require someone to show that they have soil evaluations that could accommodate a septic, but not necessarily have the septic designs.
Design, maybe not, I know the area, but the beach field, or we don't?
We don't, we, our practice has not been to require it. Any requirement we have for it comes from the definition of a yield plan in the zoning ordinance, and the language about it is somewhat vague. It just says would have adequate sewage disposal. We've, the practice has been that the soil evaluations have worked for that historically. That's sort of been the practice.
Might be more critical if it was, if it was a well versus public water. And you'd have to have the site distances from wells.
So there's confirmation in the file as well. We did reach out to Suez's Water in Curtis Corner, as mentioned, and we received a letter that indicates it's available for the proposed three lots at this stage of the game.
So my question is to the staff, and maybe to Rich, under the utilities on page 19 of the town document, Kayla, your document, this is part of the town's future sewer service area? And I just wanted to get an understanding where that is in the capital expenditure plan, taking sewer line down Sagatucket Road to the...
Well, it's, yeah, it's not. But this applicant still is going to be required to submit a sewer feasibility study, and we'll review it like we do every other. And, you know, if the proposal is to do OWTS on three lots, then that's the proposal, and whether we require a connection or not is, you know, up to the Department of Public Service Director.
So the two feasibility studies are required to be included in the...
It will be required as part of the submission of the, of the application, because they're requesting a combined application, I believe? So it'll be required as part of that submission, that the feasibility is completed.
Yeah. I'll chime in on that, too. So basically, our checklist, the checklist for submission for the plans, say, septic or OWTS as proposed by the applicant, at the end of the day, the proposal for wastewater or utilities on the site, what actually gets approved there, isn't solely in the hands of the applicant, because it's within the future sewer service area. So we ask the applicant to complete that sewer feasibility study before the subdivision is moving forward, honestly, so that we can have that understanding. So in short, basically, a sewer feasibility study will need to be done, just documenting your request to use OWTS instead. Mr. Rosen is certainly familiar with the requirements of those studies to have in them. That would be vetted through. We'll have that come forward as part of, with the request to combine. If it's so granted by the board, we would ask for that to come in as part of that submittal.
Um, your point of access would be between lots one and two?
Actually, yes. And take that one step further. We looked a little bit ahead, and we, the applicant, at this point, is probably the one that will build these lots out, and kind of looking at the second and the third lot as the two lots that would share an access through lot two at this point. It's actually the intent to keep the lot to the west, lot one on its own, so we'd have two curb cuts, three but the two proposed going forward, most likely.
This lot was created from the Arthur Stedman Estate. My only concern is that, that piece of property, I don't know if it is now still 13 acres and it goes out to South Road. Do you have a purchase agreement on the rest of that property, or just? Beg your pardon?
I do not.
Okay. I'm just wondering about future development, whether there was any plan to do something on the rest of that property?
That's a good question, because we have another parcel off of Curtis Corner that had the same kind of situation.
Any further thoughts, comments for the applicant? Staff?
We just have one request also in the file, that moving forward, we combine master and preliminary stages. We ask that board still consider that, and vote on that if we so move.
Yep.
Got that. Any thoughts on that request, the second part of the pre-app?
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. So do we, since this is a pre-application, do we need, but we need a vote for the...
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make that motion. South Kingston Planning Board hereby grants the request of the applicant, J. Thomas Construction, to combine the conceptual master plan and preliminary plan stages of review for the proposed project known as Curtis Corner Estates, located off Kerners Corner Road, Assessor's Platte 47-2 Lot 32. The applicant shall be required to meet the application requirements for both the conceptual master plan and preliminary plan stages of review prior to scheduling the required public hearing.
We have a motion from Maria. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Joe. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
You are safe? Coming up. You're doing it? Okay.
I just wanted to, before we adjourn, congratulate Kayla on her appointment to Director of Planning.
Very good, Kayla.
Don't leave us.
Thank you, thank you all. I'm very, very excited. I said this to Maria a little earlier. I'm excited, I'm honored, I'm honestly a little humbled by it, and so I hope to serve you all well.
Very good.
And one last question for you all. Our TRC meeting for January is on the eighth of Jan, eighth of January, TRC meeting, eighth. I got to take her? All right. Yes. TRC is always the second Wednesday of the month. Oh, so I'm talking about January? Yes, I'm, yeah. So we have now, okay, so we have the TRC tomorrow morning. What has happened to us here is because of the holiday, this would have been your work session night, and so we're all a little off on like where we are right now, I think. So I'm trying to queue up, because we won't see you all before that January 8th TRC for that next meeting. I believe we have Elise coming tomorrow morning. We have John. Honestly, that's not no fault of your own, an incorrect agenda, like, an agenda was posted that said a wrong date and day lineup? Yep. Okay, I'll talk to you afterwards, and we'll get you. Kay?